Hello, I am going to call to order the November twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four Cedarburg School Board meeting. This is a regular meeting of the Cedarburg School Board and is a public meeting. Prior notices have been placed in the district and additional copies were forwarded to the city and town of Cedarburg, as well as the News Graphic and Milwaukee Journal Sentinel. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, this evening we'll start with recognitions. This evening, we have Cedarburg High School Athletic Director John Hannam, and he will present the fall sports recognitions.
Good evening. Excited to share the outstanding accomplishments of our student athletes from this past fall season. We also have winter sports just kicked off. We had our first competition last night with girls' basketball. They had a big win, so that is exciting. Before we get into the accomplishments, there we go. Just have a couple of quick updates to share here. All of our teams at CHS, they have the opportunity to work with a sports psychologist. So we have Catherine up here, and she was a speed skater in the Olympics, and she does a great job with her team. So you see the winter teams that are currently working with her, and you see some of the skills that she addresses. And, you know, this extends past, you know, the field and into the classroom. So that's why we're excited to work with her, because, you know, you see these things in the air that will hopefully help on tests and just as much as at the free throw line or wherever. So just wanted to share this with you, and I know our coaches and our athletes and parents are all very excited about the information that she provides. And then we have a little project update here with our soccer shelters. I want to thank Rick and B and G for helping install these. This was a little overdue, if you know our past shelters that we had. So we're excited to have these, and I had got these about midway through the boys' season. So I just wanted to show a picture of these. And into our accolades here, so for girls' golf, we have all conference. So Player of the Year, we have Lindsey Krane, and she was back-to-back golfer of the year. She's just incredible. And then we have Addie King, who is second team. And then we have cross-country, so second team here, we have Owen Wood, and honorable mention, Henry Schwester. And then girls' cross-country, we have Maya Wood, who's second team. And then we have girls' tennis. We have our number-one doubles, which was Zoe and Sarah, and then our number-one singles, which was Cindy Betts. And then boys' soccer had just an incredible season, and you see all the student athletes here that were recognized. So for first team, we have Griffin, Mitchell, and Lucas. And then second team here was Liam. And then honorable mention, we have Jasper, Jack, Jonah, Wilson, and Victor. And then continuing on with boys' soccer, they were undefeated conference champions for the first time since nineteen ninety-six. And they were also regional champs, and they had a very tough loss to their season here. So just a great season all the way through. And then continuing on to boys' volleyball, we have first team up top there. We have Jordan and Augie. And then second team down below, we have Jade and Colin. And then honorable mention, we have Logan. And they also had a great season. And Jared and Son had a little bit to do with the ending of their season over at Homestead. They had a great season and a very tough loss to Homestead.
I'm kidding.
Jared and Son is a very nice volleyball player, too. And then we have girls' swim and dive here. We have Lauren, who is first team all-conference for dive, and she placed seventh at state. And then girls' volleyball, for first team was Peyton Wolman. Second team was Kalen Sorey, and then honorable mention was Lucy Paul. And then finally, we have football, and you see Logan Zaire up there. There's just a ton of accomplishments around his name here. He's just an incredible athlete, but an even better person if you know him. And then we have Spencer Sturm, who was first team on offense. Then honorable mention on defense. And then Luke Leir was first team on offense. And then continuing on here, second team up top, we have Jamison Kresmer, Kyle Anderson, and Jacob Little. And then down below, we have Robert Pescula and Aiden McCoy. And then finally, we have honorable mention Alex Evinoff and Ryan Lemke. So that concludes fall sports. I don't know if anyone has any questions. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
Sorry.
Okay. John, could you just remind me for, oh, gosh, what was her name, Catherine?
Yes.
How much time does she spend with the athletes? And I recall you talking a bit about this, and I'd like a reminder, refresher.
So we've changed us up each year based off of the feedback we get from our coaches and our athletes. So she meets with our coaches once a month, and then she provides the information through our coaches.
Okay.
And then they facilitate the information to our student athletes.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, John. Thank you. All right. With regards to the consent agenda, board members, I ask that you approve the minutes from the budget hearing on October twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four, the Budget and Finance Report, which includes the summary of accounts, check register, check detail, and credit card transaction reports, and the personnel report. Mr. DeRosa, Director of Human Resources, is here to provide an overview of the personnel report.
Thank you, Dr. Clark. Good evening, everyone. Just one notable piece under the professional employees. We have our first retirement this year. It's going to be Dawn Zarick at the end of this school year. Spent her entire career in the Cedarburg School District, started in February of nineteen ninety-four, and will have completed thirty-one years of service of the Cedarburg School District. Dawn's been a great math teacher and colleague, and certainly wish her the best in her retirement.
Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
I will second that. You have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Abstentions? Motion passes. I never said aye.
I didn't either, and I apologize. My screen was loading, so I was just quickly going through the actual agenda.
Should we take the vote again?
If you don't mind, if you're able to.
Are there questions or comments?
Oh, I'm sorry. Are there any questions or comments?
I just wanted to point out in the report for finance, page twenty-six, we have several items. Fourth from the top, several payments for Character Strong.
Do you have a question about what those are for?
No, I just want to point them out.
I did have a question as well and had them answered, that it was related to special ed.
Any other discussion, comments, questions? Should we try it for a vote? Not used to this, guys. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Vote passes, seven-zero. Thank you.
Six-zero.
Six-zero.
All right. Superintendent's report. This evening, we have two reports to share with the board. The first is a presentation about a new culinary course, Pro Start, that the board approved two years ago. And then we'll have a brief presentation regarding the recently released two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four Wisconsin State Report Cards. Here's Mr. Casey Bo, CHS principal, to introduce his team.
It's my distinct pleasure to introduce the Family and Consumer Science Team, Ms. Joellen Bistl and Ms. Maggie Shield.
All right, thank you, everybody. We are our two teachers here in Family and Consumer Science, and we are here to discuss or share with you guys our new class that has been running. We're in our second year of Pro Start. We have two students with us. We have Maisie and Richard, too, and they're going to share just their experiences, their current Pro Start students this year. Okay, so what is Pro Start? So students have the opportunity to explore the exciting and developing professions in the culinary industry using the National Restaurant Association curriculum. We do use a textbook in there. It's a nationally certified class that all of our students at the high school are able to take if willing and wanting. Within this curriculum, we have some guest speakers from our community and from all-around areas that help share their knowledge and help. They come in and they do demonstrations for our students and just help them understand what it is like to, whether it's manage a restaurant, own a restaurant, what, you know, what classes they would need to take. And if that's their path in life, what, just an experience to see a person who's come from, you know, the culinary world. This is a year-long course offered every other day. We have two sections this year, and then we have two certifications that are offered. We will get into those. Want to share these?
Sure.
So throughout the year, we cover all of these units. Currently, we are in Unit Three, so Equipment, Knives, and Kitchen. We cover the restaurant industry, so students learned a little bit about what it's like to, you know, like the different aspects of the restaurant industry, hospitality services and things like that. Unit Two, Serve Safe, which was the sanitation and food safety. They learn about, you know, safety and sanitation in the kitchen and, you know, things that managers might be looking for to keep not only their staff but also guests safe. And the students recently took their Serve Safe exam, which is a national, the Restaurant Association exam for food handlers. And we sent their test in last week, so hopefully they'll be getting their results soon. And they felt really good about it, which is always a good thing. So we're in Equipment, Knives, and Kitchen. And then as we progress throughout the year, we have some really great units and labs that students are involved in. So each day, they get a little bit of notes, but then the majority of the class is spent in a, you know, in a lab where they're, they have hands-on experience. And I know that our students here will talk a little bit more about that as well. So I don't want to take away their bit that they want to share with you. Okay, so the two certifications that students are able to get, the first one we just gave the students November eleventh and twelfth, I believe, was the Serve Safe Food Handler. It was a forty-five-question exam that they had questions about just safety and sanitation when they're working in a kitchen, holding food at the correct temperature, what happens if you, if food's not held at the correct temperature, how to store food, how to serve it properly. So it's everything that you would need in a restaurant. And actually, if you go to restaurants around the area, you'll see Serve Safe Food Handler and then Food Manager certifications actually posted, because every restaurant has to have managers that are certified. Maggie and I are both Serve Safe Food Manager certifications, so we start out with the students having the food handler first. The second certificate is the end-of-the-course certification. Yeah, Pro Start One has a certification and Pro Start Two has a certification. It's a comprehensive exam from the entire school year, so all of those units you guys saw. It's taken at the end of the year. The sophomores through seniors are required to take it. They need to score seventy-five percent or higher, and then they have their certification. So that's also nationally, the NRA, the National Restaurant Association, also, you know, certifies that as well. So we will be giving that in late May, so we can catch the seniors before they, before they leave. That test is very difficult. It's because it's a whole year, and it's very comprehensive, very, very detailed questions. The current guest speakers that we have had come through our classes. We had Sendix. They discussed food inspection, food safety and sanitation. And then they will come back and do a soups and sauces demonstration. We had Cisco come in. They did a knife demonstration and talked about knife safety, since that's the current unit we're in. We had a former Cedarburg High School student come in from, he's the manager at Coco Seafood in Oconomowoc, and he did a mushroom risotto demonstration. And then him and his wife came in and they talked about just what, what does it take to be a restaurant manager? You know, what classes should you be taking? And then he also talked about food safety and sanitation. And then we also, last year, we had the owner, Barca, come in from the Chill, and she talked about, like, her career path from not having any clue about the culinary world to working her way up in a restaurant and obviously owning some very famous restaurants within the area. She was really good about how do you operate your daily, your daily operation of the management position of owning a restaurant, what your hours are like. So gave the students a really, really good overview of what the expectation is if that's what you want to do. And then she talked about her education. And then we also had Nick, and he will be coming in again this year. He's a former CHS student as well. He currently runs The Feast downtown Cedarburg. It's a new restaurant. He does it kind of like on the side. His experience and his education through the culinary world is crazy. The people, the famous people he's worked for, and just for the students to see that side of it as well. And he did an awesome demonstration last year. We had every single kitchen group do part of the demonstration, and then we put it all together to make, he made a, they made a creamy carrot risotto. So, and his career path is awesome. And so for the kids to see that and see what the, you know, the top end of the culinary world could be for them, I think it's very, it was very eye-opening for the students. So he'll be coming back in at second semester. Okay, so this was some, the Cisco, this was a gentleman from Cisco that came in. He's their knife specialist. So he came in and showed the students, like, how to properly hold the knife, all the different, a bunch of the different cuts, because we actually just had a performance assessment in our classes about all the different cuts that the students use, and the expectation is that they're using those cuts now throughout the rest of their lab. So this was Joseph. He did an awesome job with the students in letting them get in hands-on with some hard products that the students had to cut up. And then this was John Levine. He was the former CHS student from Coco's, and he came in and made a risotto and had students involved as well. Sure. So like I said before, each day, the students come in and they do a lab of some kind that ties in with our unit. And so I took a couple of pictures while they were cooking, but they get a recipe. They're in a group of three or four students, depending on the class size and their group size. And then they have to follow the recipe, work as a team to create their, their final product. And in this example here, they made an egg roll in a bowl lab. So they had to, in this one, they were chopping up different vegetables with the cabbage, onion, carrot, shredding a carrot, and cooking some pork. So they work together to cook and then clean, and then they get to enjoy their, their creation after they're, they're finished with that. Okay, four questions. Let's let Maisie and Lucy maybe share their experiences.
Hi, I'm Maisie. I'm in this class. I really like this class a lot. As someone who's been interested in culinary arts for a few years now, I feel this class, like, really inspires and teaches me all about cooking and just everything to know. I just take my Serve Safe test. I feel I did good on it. It's, right now, we're learning knife skills, as said before. And we spend the first twenty to thirty minutes of class, like, learning about different knife cuts, different things about, like, different julienne cuts. Yeah, we made Play-Doh, actually, and we learned how to cut different types of cuts with Play-Doh. So that was really fun to do. And then we spend the rest of class making a certain dish. And I feel it really teaches teamwork, which is something that you're going to have to use a lot if you want to go into the culinary arts job description type. So I feel like it's a really good class to take if you're interested in stuff like that. But yeah, that's all I really have to say.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Richard. I'm a senior here. I take this class. I think it's, I think it's one of the better food classes. I've taken Beginning Foods and I take International. I like the hands-on aspect and like the really bringing in the experience with all the guest speakers. And I'm more of a hands-on learner. I'm interested in foods, like food and cooking. I hope to own a restaurant, so this class, I think that's, like, really guided me in the right direction. With the guest speakers coming in, just talking about how their journeys to being restaurateurs, managing restaurants, like, the guy who came in for Cisco, I think that, that was really interesting. And I like how the classes run, where it's, like, there's not that many notes. It's enough notes to prepare you for, like, tests, like the Serve Safe, which I also think I did pretty good on. But it's, it's a very hands-on class, and I think it's good for people who want to have a future in the restaurant industry. And I think it's also good for people who just want to experiment with food, maybe cook a couple of things in class and eat during the day. I think it's a good all-around class that really anyone can take. I think it's a very inviting course, and yeah.
All right, do you guys have any questions for us? We did make you pumpkin bars, by the way, as well, so enjoy those.
Sounds very exciting. Are there prerequisites to taking this class?
There is. They have to take Beginning Foods, which is our entry-level class.
So for, this is the second year it's been offered. Have you noticed an increase in enrollments since the first year?
Yes, we have. We have, we have two full, we both have full twenty-four students maxed out for Pro Start One. So that's great, in its second year, so.
I had a question. When I was in the high school touring around last school year, when I came into the culinary arts room, there, I heard about some desires for some improvements in that space. Can you describe some things that you think would make the class, you know, enhance the class? If there are some improvements that could be made in the future?
Yes, so we are currently going through, we've been working with Casey in the building and ground. So we are getting a partial upgrade with our demonstration table, which is where you saw the guest speakers. So they're going to be putting in, like, a drop-down TV, and then all-restaurant style, like a combi oven, another smaller refrigerator, and then a gas stove top with a hood. So it mimics a restaurant. It's like one station where the kids get the experience of mimicking what it would be like in a restaurant. So the, the kids' stations, if you've ever been down there, are more residential. Obviously, yes, we would love for that to be redone. We would need more space, so we're open to that anytime. But, so the students will get that experience for sure. We're not sure how we're going to work it yet. We may, might rotate groups through that front station next year. The plan is to have it accomplished by the start of next school year, we're hoping, right? So, yeah, we've been working on getting that upgraded. We'll start with that and then see where we can go from there. Because we have, not only Pro Start, but our enrollment in our program in those classes, like, we can't, there's not enough of us to run the number of requests for students. So we're kind of busting at the seams. So this is, it's a, it's a great step in the right direction.
I'm curious, between Maisie and Richard, what your favorite dishes so far have been to make? And if you're up for sharing why, go for it, but if not, that's okay, too.
Personally, I liked the egg roll in a bowl, because it was very easy and very good.
Mine was actually today, we made chicken noodle soup, which involved cooking, like, chicken, cutting up the vegetables, and making the noodles. And I feel like all the different aspects of the dish made it really fun to do, especially with your team.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Enjoy the pumpkin bar.
All right, next up, Ms. Ally Rudich, Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, will share an overview of the two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four Wisconsin State Report Cards.
Good evening, and nothing like following people that gave you food for those presentations. I am very excited to be here tonight, and actually, this is a very exciting opportunity for my first presentation to be able to showcase some of the amazing things that are going on in this district. So very excited to share where we are at with school report cards that were released yesterday. Here are some of our friends from our recent Veterans Day celebration. So tonight, as we talk about our state report cards, there's going to be a couple of different things that you're going to notice throughout the presentation. To just lay some groundwork, just to remind you from an assessment reporting standpoint, usually, our school district gets our initial copies or draft copies of our school report card in October. During that time, we do spend some time reviewing all of the information, making sure that things are current and accurate. And then they are embargoed until November. So yesterday, you probably received information that the embargo had been lifted off of our state report card, and that's when we can actually publicly share it. Later on in May, we'll come back. We'll talk about our overall district assessment plan and that, how this all fits in with those assessment plans. Tonight, we're going to talk a little bit about the overview of accountability with our state report cards, what they look like and the anatomy of those state report cards, and then the grand reveal of our actual individual report cards. So first of all, report cards are a form of accountability from the state. They are there to make sure that the community can see the effectiveness of schools, not only from an achievement standpoint, but also in a variety of other ways. The school report cards sometimes are thought of specifically with just achievement, but there's a lot that goes into our school report cards and should be a place that shows the community how things are going within schools and school districts. This is how we are held accountable for educating our students and a way that we are showing that we are preparing all of our students for their future endeavors. This satisfies state and federal reporting requirements. And you're going to see two asterisks here. I would say this is something that we specifically dig into. We want to make sure that we are identifying areas of strength to build upon and really deepen. And then we also need to pinpoint areas that we need improvement. The hard part about state assessments in a state report card is it is an autopsy. We find out after, sometimes months after, students actually take a test. So this is another measure for us to compare some of our other assessment results and what we are seeing with students to see, are we on the right track? So that is something that is definitely helpful for us from a report card standpoint. Historically, the report cards have been issued since the two thousand and eleven, twelve school year. They are there to make sure that we have a continuous improvement process. I will also say that the state has been on a continuous improvement process with report cards since they've started. So when you see some of these other links here this evening, when you are comparing those links prior to COVID, just know that it can be a little bit difficult to compare year to year there, because there's a couple of different assessments. The report card has changed a couple of different times in the way that they have processed it from a continuous improvement standpoint. But this is now the, we are now in a very solid cycle for us to be able to compare, to compare year to year at this point. So what's new? Many of us might have heard that there are some new cut scores updated, and those were updated for the forward exam, the pre-ACT and the ACT assessment. This assessment data that goes into these report cards reflects these updates. So it is a combination at the different levels that goes into some of those achievement scores. Also, with specifically the forward exam, those scoring level names have changed. So they are now advanced, meeting, approaching, and developing. Those are the new levels and categories that students can test into. They were formerly known as advanced, proficient, basic, and below basics. So just know that those have shifted just a little bit. Overall, with the new adjustments, they have said that schools and districts can expect to see achievement scores a little bit greater than they have in the previous just because of some of the adjustments that they've made at the state level. Despite those shifts in cut scores, we are a very high-achieving district. We are rigorous. We want to make sure that we're doing the right things for students, so we still are monitoring where our students are, even from some of those previous cut scores. And I'll talk a little bit about how we're doing that in just a moment. The data that is considered for the school report cards does take place over the three most current school years. So the first round would have been for twenty twenty, or twenty twenty-one, twenty-two through this past year. So that's where some of the data comes from for our report cards.
Ally? Yeah, I just had something just to add. I think it's important to note just how drastically that the Wisconsin DPI has changed. The DPI report cards, so like, just, in my opinion, they're really, like, hiding declining student achievement, like, statewide. I mean, just to give you some examples, because they really have changed, changed it to make it hard to compare, like, this year's report card to last year's report card. When you look at, like, meeting expectations When you look at like meeting expectations and that type of thing. So like just to give you an example statewide, per DPI, that they are saying that 94% of public school districts statewide are meeting expectations or higher. And when you look at things like reading proficiency and math proficiency, it's kind of like a joke to think that that would be the right assessment to give a school. Like there's 12 public schools statewide that have 15% or less reading proficiency, and those schools are marked as meeting expectations. So it's just frustrating as a board member, looking at these assessments like year over year, to see DPI kind of changing the benchmarks on it in such a drastic way. And I appreciate, and we had a discussion on this at the curriculum committee a few months ago, and I appreciate the effort done here to look at this data and say, how can we compare the results for Cedarburg students year after year in a way that's more fair and balanced compared to these changing benchmarks that DPI puts on these?
Correct, and we're gonna talk a little bit about that as we move forward too. All right, so what you see on the screen, I'm just gonna give you a brief overview so that once you start to see the different report cards, you can understand a little, little bit about what you are seeing. In the middle there, where you see that bar graph, that is some demographic information that is specific to either the school or the district. You're gonna see the breakdown in some of our student groups in those circles. You're also going to see the score summary. So on this particular slide, that overall score, that 91.6 is our district score summary. It's really important to not think of this as a percentage. So they, they, it's not a percentile. That's not what we need to be thinking of. It's really hard sometimes when things are out of 100 to not think of things as a percentile. You're going to, we're gonna talk a little bit about some of our key proficiency and priority areas of achievement growth, target outcomes, and the on-track to graduation. That will be on our next slide. And then just kind of talk about how each of those pieces fit together. Board members, I will also let you know that within your presentation, there are two links for you to see the report card at a glance. I did also make a copy for you this evening as you're looking at what these different report cards are. And then also a link to some of the accountability resources that helped to break this down a little bit. One also important thing to note in that bottom right-hand corner where you see that, I like to call it a little trivial pursuit pie because sometimes everybody that you look at might have a different-looking pie graph there. The bottom two will always be the same at 25% and 25%, where the top two really are balanced out by your economical status. So for us, you're going to see that 41.7%, I'm blurring on my eyes. But that is our weight, and that is based off of achievement. So more of our score is based off of our achievement than our growth. So that looks a little bit different depending on schools and different districts across the state. So here you will see our overall scores for this school year by each school. Each school for the fourth year in a row has been significantly exceeding expectations. So that is a huge celebration for our district to be able to say for four straight years that every school has been significantly exceeding expectations. It should be something to brag about. That is, that is definitely a result of the hard work that is taking place in our buildings every day with our students. From a historical standpoint, this is where our overall school report card scores have been. So you're going to see that 1920, and that is blank, there was no scores during COVID. Prior to 1920, that's where we kind of talked about some of those shifts were changing and some of the ways that they did the school report cards were changing. You'll notice the different colors actually match to either significantly exceeds expectations with the darkest green, exceeds expectations with the middle green, or meets expectations in the yellow. Since 2019-20, we have stayed in that significantly exceeds expectations. In the bottom left-hand corner, board members, you also have a link to our detailed historical data that gives you a little bit more information than just as up here on the slide. This is just a snapshot of the overall historical scores. So let's jump in. We have some exciting things to talk about. So we'll start with our district report card. On the screen, you will see our overall score of 91.6. That's the same as that previous score. We are five stars with significantly exceeding expectations. Proud to say that we are the number-two state, or district in the state out of 367. What is important to know is that we also, when we're looking at some of our rankings per se, we are comparing school districts and schools that are specific to ours. So this is a pre-K through 12 comparison with districts because different districts look a little bit differently within the state. So when we look at those priority areas for our district, you're going to see achievement, growth, target group outcomes, and on-track to graduation. Achievement is straight achievement. This is our proficiency in both math and reading. Growth is how students are growing compared to other students like them across the state. In that bottom-left corner, the target group outcomes, this is, this is a really important thing, I think, to consider because when we talk about making sure that we are doing things in designing instruction for our students, this is one of those areas. So target group is your bottom 25%, and we wanna make sure that those students are growing at a higher rate than potentially students that might be in that other 75%. And then that bottom circle is the on-track to graduation. You'll notice in the on-track to graduation, it's a composite score of chronic absenteeism. So attendance does count. Graduation status, for the district, there is a third-grade reading or English and language arts score, and then an eighth-grade mathematics score. So when we see those different buildings, you're gonna see at elementary, just that third-grade reading score will be there, and the math score will only be at the middle school. So some areas of note, again, we talked about all schools are significantly exceeding expectation for the fourth year in a row, celebrating number-two district in Wisconsin. We are also proud of the fact that we've had our highest-ever target group outcomes and growth. So from a district standpoint, we moved those kids in that bottom 25% better than we have previously. Also, from an overall district standpoint, our highest-ever advanced in meaning, which were formerly proficient and advanced in math and reading. So those scores from that proficiency standpoint in math and reading across the district were the highest that we have seen. From a historical standpoint, this is what you can see from not only our overall score at the top, but then those priority areas, historically, how that has, has taken place over the past four years. So that is our district. You're gonna see this be pretty repetitive now because we'll go into each individual one. Our first, starting with our elementary schools. First score, school this evening is Parkview Elementary School, which is now the number-three elementary school in the state. Their overall score was a 95.1. You'll see some of their, their pies over there in the bottom right-hand corner. And again, we are comparing elementary schools to similar elementary schools so that pre-K through five elementary school status. Here are their priority score areas. That 99.7 up in the upper-left-hand corner is pretty impressive. So that is an achievement score for both math and reading. You'll notice the growth areas, target group outcomes, on-track to graduation, where those scores end up. One thing of note in the achievement, growth, and on-track to graduation, you're gonna see a faded blue line below. That just indicates where the state was. So if you're curious as to where we are within the comparison to the state. Some of their areas of note, their highest overall report card score ever, highest over achievement in ELA achievement and math achievement, and their highest math growth ever. So a lot of really strong areas to be focusing on. And they're wanting to, you're gonna hear this repeated a lot tonight, just some of those areas of focus is to continue to narrow some of those gaps and grow all of our students. So I'll just give you a minute just to take a peek at that. One area of note, if you do take a few moments to take a look at the, the actual report cards, when they see these priority areas, it also compares schools in, across the state. So for example, that 99.7 achievement, that this, it says in, for Parkview, this school is 100, better than 100% of schools in our state. So it also kind of breaks it down to show really what that score means in comparison to some of the other schools in the state. And here are their priority areas from a historical standpoint. Moving into Thorson, Thorson is the number-13 school, elementary school in the state with a score of 91.1. Here are their priority scores. They are proud of their overall, highest report card score ever, highest overall growth, as well as highest growth in math and ELA, and their highest-ever overall target group outcomes, as well as the achievement and growth other. And so also continuing to focus specifically on the target group of students and making sure that they are moving them. And a historical standpoint for Thorson. Westlon, our final elementary school, is the number-five elementary school in the state with a score of 94.6. Here are their priority area scores. Again, highest overall report card score ever, highest overall target group outcomes for achievement and growth, highest advanced in meaning, which is that formerly proficient and advanced in reading and math ever. And then they're also going to be continuing some of that ELA growth, and they have actually specifically narrowed down into short rites because that is an area that they have taken a look at and dug into from the forward results. And one of the things that they're going to be looking at is monitoring daily, daily student attendance because that absenteeism is something that does go along with that on-track to graduation. And from a historical perspective. Onto middle school, number-two middle school in the state. And again, just wanting to make note that this is in comparison to middle schools that are true six-eight middle schools with a score of 95. Here you will see the different priority area scores. Of note, highest overall math and achievement, highest target group outcomes growth ever, highest advanced in meeting, that proficiency in advanced from before. And continuing with those themes, making sure that we're working on focusing to close those gaps between our target group students. And their historical view. And finally, Cedarburg High School, number-seven high school in the state, overall score of an 85.2. And our priority scores for the high school. Please also notice when you're looking at that on-track to graduation, those bottom two do not apply for high school because they're third grade and eighth grade. Things of note, highest overall achievement ever, highest math achievement with a tie for the highest ELA achievement, highest target group outcomes growth ever. And the area of focus, similar to other buildings, is overall growth, but particularly in math. And what I will say is because you see that there's some math, overall highest achievement in math, our students are performing really well on math, but they're not growing as fast as we would like them to grow. So that is an area that we are going to be looking at, as well as there's been some specific identified areas that we need to target for math. This was something that, from what I'm understanding, we saw coming. And Mr. Bo and Dr. Clark did talk with the board last year and did make some adjustments to math. So it'll be exciting to have that be in place this year. So that is helping to support some of that evidence that we want to make sure that we're doing the right things for math programming. And then a historical priority area. So our next work, our, our next work, our next steps and work will look pretty similar to in the previous years. One thing to note is we have amazing principals and amazing educators here. It is really hard to maintain this status. We work pretty closely with a gentleman out of CISA six that helps us to dissect some of our data. And his quote was, "You continue to make growth despite high achievement." So that's really important, and it is something that is a core value for us. So focusing our work within our school teams and PLCs, talking about what needs to be done in those instructional settings, focusing on high-leverage practices, really digging into our target group needs and finding out what we need to be doing, taking a look at intervention, extension, remediation, and then making sure that we're keeping tabs on our student attendance. And we do wanna make sure that our kids are here at school. It's important. Any questions?
I had just a few. So the areas of focus, how, who determines that? Is it the building principals, or you wanna walk through how those are determined?
Yes, so at each level, a lot of the building principals work with their core teams within the buildings, but also then with their buildings to identify some of those goals. Both Dr. Clark and I meet pretty frequently with our building principals to also make sure that we're meeting with them, hearing their needs, and where their areas of growth and goals are. Our state does also expect that we have student learning outcome goals every year, and a lot of times, those help to support some of those next area steps for the buildings. So there's a lot of collaboration in identifying them.
And for math at the high school, are we able to monitor? You know, you said this data kind of comes out late, and I know we've made some, or the high school has made some adjustments. Are we able to kind of look at that as we're going through to see if hopefully they're working instead of waiting till next year?
That we're doing the right thing? Yes, we are looking for different ways to be watching this because it is a little bit of a new situation for us. But monitoring those students really, really closely, that is also a good reason why the high school has gone to, continue to have that fall testing because it does give them information on how their students are doing also.
I just have one more. Just on the groups, when we said, or my, let me get my computer. So when we looked at the, let me find it. So like the highest advance in meeting in math and ELA, for example, in Webster, is that based on last year's categories or with the new categories?
So it is the new categories. It is the students that tested into those areas. So you can look at it as a, that could be something that's a little bit different because some of those cut scores have changed. One of the things that we are watching to make sure that we're really monitoring student growth is we're comparing percentile because that's, that is consistent across the, the testing. So regardless of where those cut scores are, we're looking at our students growing from one year to another in percentile and making sure that we're watching that so that we know if we are doing the right thing despite where the cut scores are. So that helps us to even that out a little bit more than where the cut scores are.
Thank you. Other questions?
Ally, thank you for the presentation. It's very helpful to see. I, you know, there were comments made earlier, so I don't know that I need to add to that necessarily. But for my quick notes I had here, and you may have addressed this. So first, if you did, thank you for your patience. For student growth on Webster, it looked like there was quite a dip there. And I don't recall if that was something that was specifically mentioned on what that growth looks like, if that's for our special education students, if it's, it's some, you know, I, I recognize that the areas where we've dipped are the target growth and the, excuse me, target group and the growth. For, it looked like both Webster and CHS. So I, I remember you talking about CHS. I just didn't remember if you talked about Webster, but.
And so this is where their area of focus is within that target group to really specific and specifically hone in on those students and make sure that. and specifically hone in on those students and make sure that they're matching the right instructional objectives to them. So when they're, when they're having some of those intervention times and those PA times, to make sure that we're really closely monitoring them and using our time wisely with them.
I think that generally answers my question, so I guess more accurately, even though this growth, the growth is part of the report card, it is at the discretion of administration to then look at which students, which area, which population of students that's focused on?
So, yes, but it's pretty, when you go through our data reports, that's usually where you're going to need to focus some of your efforts. So when we are looking at things from a holistic aspect, usually that's where it ends up being. We want to make sure that those students are growing in all of our areas. You saw the common trend of that target group area. The other thing that's important to know, when you are a smaller building, some, sometimes people think the bottom twenty-five percent are students that are sitting maybe lower than thirty percent. We have students that are in the sixtieth percentile that are considered our bottom twenty-five percent. So we have to make sure that we are really watching our students, because sometimes you might miss them if you, if you're not really making sure that you're checking that group and really making sure that everything is matched up for them. So it might not just be special education students.
And I think that's what I'm trying to get to, so thank you again for my, having patience in my, trying to understand that piece of it. And I know there had been some discussion on the actual report cards themselves and whether it makes sense to have it based solely on achievement, rather than target group outcomes, growth, on track to graduation. And I'd like to hear your thoughts on that, on whether it is beneficial in your view to have these kind of outlined. It is, I think it, it can be, maybe harder for individuals in the public if they're not in the meetings and not looking at the agendas. And I do think there's warranted conversation about how, how things have shifted, right, from DPI. But from your perspective as one of our administrators, what is your take on this? Is it sufficient for your needs in doing your job and doing your job well for our district?
I don't know if one thing can ever make that decision. I do think that you need to look across your entire system to find out what other things are in place, and does everything match, right? So this does, this should help us to say, is this what we are seeing when we're doing our own assessments? Is this comparable to our district assessments? Is this something that we're seeing when we do fall assessments? So it's just a different way of displaying data, and it's, it's helpful to know when you have different assessments, if that is all coming together. I don't know if, I don't know if I have a strong feeling either way. I think that there, they have done some work to really break down some of these scores in, in areas. What I've provided you is pretty much an overview, but it is interesting to see the data when you do look into the report cards.
I think it's, it's definitely good to look at everything and not to just focus on achievement, because if you're only focusing in, in one area, a lot of other things aren't getting the attention that they need. And it's, it's interesting that, you know, we have highest overall student math ELA achievements hitting target outcomes in, in really all of the schools. And we have, you know, Parkview, Thorson, and Westlawn's main scores increasing. You know, i- if there's an argument that the DPI is, is making things easier, the district overall, the high school in Webster dropped. So you would think if things were being made easier, those scores would be significantly higher. So I think looking at all of the areas and not just achievement, and not just at those historical scores is what's important.
It's just one measure, right? It's one measure on a couple set of days in the spring, when kids might be done testing, but it should help us to inform our decisions and check our thinking.
I had just one more, kind of a question, I would say. So to quote DPI's press release, they said, "The updated twenty-three, twenty-four assessment cut scores resulted in higher proficiency rates compared to previous years." And one thing that I look for on these report cards that's been helpful is to look at the math and reading proficiency rates, both at the district level and individual school level. So I would be kind of interested in seeing what that like actually is for the district this year compared to, you know, the past, you know, five years or something like that, without having kind of like the skew that was put in into that. So maybe that could be included when the forward exam data comes out. And I know that this isn't the only place that you see that you track it with, you know, the forward exams and the other standardized testing that's done. And yeah, it's not the only thing that we look for in these report cards, but it's an important measure, so just a request. Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
We have a lot to be proud of.
Thank you.
Thank you, Allie.
Okay, we're going to move into public comment, and we do have some speakers, so I am going to read this disclaimer. Any district staff member, district resident, parent of a district student or student enrolled in the district may comment during the public comment portion of a meeting per Board Policy one sixty-seven point three. For this meeting, the community may address the board during the public comment section of the meeting regarding top, regarding topics within the legitimate jurisdiction of the board. Individuals making public comments are reminded that they are not immune from legal consequences related to their speech. This includes, but is not limited to, liability for speech that is contrary to the privacy, reputational, or due process rights of others, such as defamation or making false claims. Please make your comments to the board and not to any individuals in the audience. As this is a public meeting, it is expected that everyone in attendance will conduct themselves in a respectful and courteous manner that models appropriate behavior for our students. Speech or conduct that is threatening or disruptive is prohibited. In accordance with School Board Policy one sixty-seven point three, comments by an individual speaker shall not exceed three minutes in duration. When you approach the microphone, please state your name and address for the record. Please state the topic upon which you will be commenting. If you are under the age of eighteen or are a student in Cedarburg schools, please only state your first name. As a reminder, this meeting is being recorded and will be posted on the district's website. So I have Jennifer Carley.
Good evening, Jennifer Carley, excuse me, one-five-nine-seven Babbling Avenue, Grafton, Wisconsin. Regarding the Curriculum Committee meeting on November sixth is my topic. I'm the mother of two current Cedarburg students, one who is still at Webster Avenue, Webster, and the other who attends, who attended sixth through eighth grade there. I'm here this evening to offer feedback regarding the discussion at the November sixth Curriculum Committee meeting, questioning the validity and use of the Character Strong material leverage during select PA time periods in Webster Middle School. First, it's unclear to me why the Curriculum Committee chose November twenty-fourth to spend time visiting content previously purchased by the school board actively in use in the middle of the school board, content that includes topics like listening effectively, choose kindness, and bullying one oh one. During the Curriculum Committee, it was broadly questioned by select members that taking time away from academic subject learning to spend on these kinds of topics was potentially detrimental to school performance. However, school performance, as we just heard, doesn't seem to suggest a significant deterioration in academic performance by investing these small amounts of time in growing productive, kind students. I don't know exactly when we purchased the first subscription to Character Strong. I believe it may have been in twenty-twenty, but we just saw how the scores have increased to become a record level this year. If the Curriculum Committee and members of this board feel it is imperative to address some of those perceived risks to students through exposure to this content, due to a lack of formal approval or review of the content, I would prefer evidence of such adverse impacts first be presented to parents who have students in the schools, as I believe there is significant risk in the absence of such resources, especially given the departure from similar learning in our elementary schools. I would strongly advocate that the board not act and disrupt the school year by stopping this curriculum or these materials, but instead craft a holistic plan to, number one, clearly articulate the perceived problem, two, evaluate options using a transparent process, and three, present those options seeking feedback and input before removing Character Strong or any similar type learning. In closing, I'd like to reiterate my support for including elements of these like found in Character Strong. And bottom line, I'd like to ask that we continue to invest time wisely, as we have high priority issues such as retaining our talented teachers as we look forward to sustaining the results we just heard. Thank you.
Thank you. And now Betsy Pelishak.
Hi, Betsy Pelishak, N thirty-one, W seven-five-one-five, Cedar Point Court. As a parent of three Webster students, I urge the board to continue to use Character Strong. All three of my kids have shared positive impact that Character Strong has had on them, and I would like to see it continue to be used. Character Strong has been proven to positively impact belonging, mental health, and engagement. It is research and evidence-based, it's a resource that incorporates life skills and character development in a consistent manner. Middle school is known to be a challenging time in life. Spending time on these topics is not time wasted and should be a priority to the school board. Research shows that when students feel safe and engaged, their achievement increases, which we know is just a top priority for Cedarburg. Studies also show that mental health concerns are on the rise, which is, which will have a direct correlation to student achievement. Character Strong is just one tool that we can use preventatively to help middle schoolers' mental health and in turn impact their achievement. At the last Curriculum Committee meeting, it was, there was discussion around whether these topics should be presented just at home. Please remember that not all families are equipped to discuss topics covered in Character Strong, and even those who are equipped also could have students that would benefit from hearing those topics from trusted adults who are also trained educators. Students learn best through repetition and practice of applying skills in the environment in which they need to use those skills, which is school and not at home. Board members also suggested that families may not be aware of these lessons occurring. I know that I have received personal notifications through emails, newsletters, and, and through presentations. My children have also discussed these Character Strong lessons with me at home. So in an effort to increase transparency, staff could simply just provide the Character Strong family connection letters rather than removing it completely. It was also stated that no parents have complained about Character Strong. So I would ask the board to instead allow an opt-out option rather than eliminating it completely. This practice has been done in Cedarburg School District for other areas, so please consider it here equally. Finally, at the Curriculum Committee meeting, school board members discussed if there is a need for this resource, and the board wondered if it was necessary. They didn't necessarily see that they saw a tie-in. Let me provide the why for this. If you look at your own mission of the district policy twenty-one oh five, it states that the district will help students think critically, become self-directed, demonstrate characteristics such as empathy, honesty, responsibility, and it goes on and on. All of those topics are covered in Character Strong. The board cannot expect its own mission to be carried out consistently to all students without resources. Character Strong is aligned to the mission statement. Please allow an opt-out option rather than eliminating this resource. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
All right, so Erin Schmidt, sixteen-eighty Swallow Drive. So thank you, first of all, Ms. Erickson, for providing actual transparency to the board actions at Curriculum Committee meetings and full board meetings, despite the false promises of some to the Curriculum Committee. I would ask that you just be honest about what you are doing in trying to remove Character Strong, then at least I could respect your honesty if nothing else. What problem do you think you are solving by removing Character Strong? Do you think anyone believes this is purely procedural? What specifically in Character Strong do you object to? What is so dangerous about teaching students to not bully, or to be kind, or empathetic? Let's pretend it is procedural, like you say. How did you just pick Character Strong and previously Second Step years ago? My son played kickball in P E this week. Did you approve that equally as well? If it is procedural, why are you pausing it without a replacement or interim plan? Second Step has been paused for years with no district efforts currently to replace it, as confirmed by multiple staff. Despite recent comments by Mr. Creer and Ms. Sharland at the last Curriculum Committee meeting, if curriculum wasn't approved, how did the funding get approved? Is there a board policy to pay attention to expenditures you approve? Who on the committee is to blame? Who will recoup the district or taxpayers for wasting our money by throwing away materials already bought and paid for, tens of thousands of dollars by my last count? What are your consequences? This is the second time, as you did it with Second Step, so it is a pattern now. People get fired for much less. You already eliminated staff retention bonuses, increased class sizes, so how many bonuses could these wastes have funded? Speaking of staff, how many students and teachers did you consult with regarding Character Strong? Any at all? When you asked for an alternative to Second Step, their investigation found Second Step to also be the best option. So where is it? I just saw our scores are great. Let our professional educators do their jobs. Listen to them. Stop trying to screw it up. Schools are about more than academics. We have kids together to be amongst their peers and develop socially as well as academically. Why are you so determined to empty their social toolbox at such a pivotal time in their social and emotional development? We are here speaking up tonight instead of being with our families because you are in the wrong on this. While you are playing games, our district is full of staff and students. These are people's lives. I'd ask you to do the right thing by our students and staffs and reinstate Second Step and Character Strong immediately, and stop these unnecessary pauses in our bought and paid for curriculum. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Jaredan, or Dr. Clark, would you like to do recommendations?
Sure, this evening. We have four recommendations on the agenda. Unfortunately, I must apologize for the first recommendation. I made a mistake in the posting of this, and I put the twenty-four, twenty-five school year calendar, and we're really looking at approving the twenty-five, twenty-six school year calendar. So we'll have to move that to board discussion and approval in December, but you all have an example of what the calendar will be, and so you can get another month to take a look at it. And that calendar comes highly approved, or highly recommended. So moving on, the second recommendation is seeking approval for the board, from the board, regarding the CHS German-American Partnership Program, foreign travel to Germany during the two thousand twenty-five summer. This request has been forwarded to the full board for approval from the Curriculum Committee. Ms. Allie Rudich is available to answer questions.
Are there any questions?
I would make a motion to approve the CHS German-American Partnership Program, foreign travel to Germany in the summer of two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
Any discussion? I would just say for anyone watching online or anyone here, we saw a presentation that was at the end of last year, was it, of the students who went, and it just looks like an amazing educational opportunity. So I'm thankful that we're getting to vote on this tonight. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? Vote passes six, zero.
All right, the next recommendation is seeking approval from the board for the adoption of the Myers AP Psychology Fourth Edition textbook as a, as a resource for AP Psychology at the high school. This request has been forwarded to the full board for approval from the Curriculum Committee. Again, Ms. Allie Rudich is available to answer any questions.
Questions? Do I have a motion?
I would motion to approve the Myers AP Psychology Fourth Edition textbook as the resource for AP Psychology at CHS. I would second that.
Any discussion? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Vote passes six, zero.
All right, the last recommendation this evening is for the acceptance of donations to the district. This month, there are four donations, thirty-four thousand eighty dollars from the Cedarburg Education Foundation to support the purchase of iPads for the art rooms at all three elementary schools, five thousand sixty-two dollars and seventy-nine cents from the Cedarburg Athletic Booster Club to support CHS. $5,062.79 from the Cedarburg Athletic Booster Club to support CHS athletic programs. $7,737 from the Cedarburg Athletic Booster Club to support the CHS swim program. And $7,500 from Lockheed Martin to support the CHS robotics program. Assuming these are approved, that will total, the total donations for November is $54,379.79. And the total approved donations for the school year would be $167,000, $167,038.25.
Questions?
I'd motion approving the donations as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Vote passes six, zero. So we have committee reports. Ms. Sharland, would you like to give a report on the Curriculum Committee?
Yes.
Meeting from the November 6th.
Yeah, meeting, thank you. So we met November 6th. A few of the things we voted on just now. So we discussed the German-American partnership trip for summer 2025, summer 2025. So excited to see that happen again. We spent some time discussing the high school English pilot, so they're looking at a new curriculum, hopefully for the following school year for ninth, 10th and 11th grades at the high school. So we had two members of the English department there, grades nine and 10, did a pilot of the Into Literature curriculum, which is the high school version of the Webster new ELA curriculum and had some interesting feedback on that. And then 11th grade did a pilot of the Norton curriculum. Didn't get the strongest feedback from that particular teacher on that, but both, all the grade levels will be piloting another curriculum and we'll, we'll be hearing more about this in the winter. And next, we heard about the AP Psych textbook that we approved. That's a book that primarily resides in the classroom. There's like 10 copies. They needed an updated version of this textbook to remain compliant with the AP group. And we recommended approval for that. So that's the fourth edition of that textbook. And then finally, we discussed the Webster PA and homeroom resources. So around four times a week, they do a PA time, which is like study hall, academic support, intervention, that type of thing. And then around once a week, there's a variety of different lessons that are taught. The key thing that we were talking about there were the characters, was the Character Strong curriculum that was introduced in 2020 at Webster, but this curriculum never went through the formal school board approval process where it would come through the Curriculum Committee. You know, we would hear about the, the goals for such a curriculum, what problems is it trying to solve? And it just never did that. So this is a goal at transparency and trying to remedy that situation. So rather than move that forward to this meeting, the committee wanted more information. We wanted to hear, you know, what goals are you trying to solve for having such a curriculum? What are the best options? Is it Character Strong? Is there a better option out there? Just kind of take it through that process that any new curriculum would go through, but wasn't done for this one. So we will be discussing that again at the December 4th meeting. And finally, just one thing to add regarding that meeting, some folks in the public had the impression that I said in the meeting that I'm doing work on like a homegrown curriculum or I'm developing a curriculum. That's not true. What I said in the meeting is that some work is being done on doing some homegrown lifelong learning skill curriculum development, which has occurred in the district, but not by me, not my role as a board member. So hopefully that clears up any confusion on that. And we meet on December 4th.
Thank you.
May I ask a quick question before we adjourn? Is that allowed?
Yes.
Yes. So I've been asked, it's not, I don't think it would be a surprise to any, anyone at this table, but I've been asked about the streaming of committee meetings and about public comment specifically for curriculum committee meetings. And I have shared that my understanding is that those requests can be sent to the chairs of those committees. I am not a chair of any committee. However, I believe maybe we have a policy. I know this was reworded at various points, so policy members can certainly let me know if I'm wrong. But if there is room for board members to formally ask for public comment to be added to those curriculum committee meetings, I am asking the chair of our curriculum committee meeting to take this as my formal request to include that on agendas rather than my sending off emails. So I'll leave it off, leave it at that.
Thank you. So I will take a motion for adjournment.
I will make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abst, any abstentions? Vote passes six, zero. We are adjourned. Thank you all very, very much. Have a good night.